Early. It's right on schedule, let's keep the good time. There used to be a deal underneath him that you turned. Thought he was gonna give you a heart attack if he had it in that pocket.
I better turn it off. I never bring it. I don't even need to pick up. So we don't go off. Even I gotta remember to get Leo to sit in my chair this morning. This is for sure. Oh, you stay off camera up here there.
Well, it's one way to see it.
Everybody wants to see yours. I even had to steal a mask from the treasures department. I left. I do have them. They give both shots, survived. Both chips are at my left.
Both chips?
Is that like a dog chip? We had our rod chipped. Ready?
Yeah.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of California.
Roll call.
Mockler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda, and we need to add lanes, drone policy updates, and Drew needed a... Let me see how he worded that.
Welfare case legal matters, is that what you call it?
Yeah, to get the county welfare item added to the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda with those two additions.
Second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Any visitors to be heard?
Was Leo... You're on the sign, aren't you?
Yep, he's on the... He's on the agenda. I'm gonna be a visitor to be heard today.
Okay.
After last week's meeting, I think, Betty, I think it was wildly inappropriate to to go on social media and try and torpedo our project. I mean, we all voted in favor of it. It was a board decision, and I think to go out there and say that we were all disappointed that, and this is gonna fail, and then to give the information that we're gonna build it north of town, because I don't think we've decided where we're gonna build it. I mean, it could be a possibility, yes, but I mean, we're commissioners. We... It was a decision we all have to live with and stick with. I just think it was, on my personal belief, was wildly inappropriate to go out there and try and torpedo this thing.
Well, I think I serve the people and not the commission. And it is my belief, and I did not clearly speak for the whole commission. I spoke for myself and said that I was disappointed that my proposal did not go forward. And to not communicate my beliefs, I think, would, you know, violate my sense of ethics. You know, I think one of the... One of the concerns that the public has about the commission is that it doesn't talk and it doesn't communicate. And my promise, you know, at the time that I was running, I'm gonna keep, having been elected, which is to be as transparent as possible, and I will continue to do that.
That might be easier to swallow if you would've voted against it, but you voted in favor of it. That's my personal opinion, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yep, and you are certainly entitled to your opinion.
Any other visitors?
I would kind of personally agree with what Travis just got done saying. I think that we have to work together, and I always feel like the point is that we've never been transparent really disgusts me, because over the years, I think we've been as transparent as we possibly could be. So even when that campaign was going on, I got tired of hearing that. That wasn't the case. We've always been transparent. If anybody wanted some answers, they can certainly come to the meetings. They could certainly come and talk to us. That wasn't never an issue. I've never liked that, and I think that if... And I don't have a problem with it. If you would've voted against it, I probably would've felt a little bit better, because I could've understood where you were coming from. But when you voted for it, when you vote for something, I think you have to stand behind what you voted for. You know, even if, even if I voted against things in the past here that I didn't believe in, and I think, and that's my prerogative, that, and we have a responsibility to, I agree with you, we have a responsibility to listen to the people, not necessarily to the commission. However, one small group is not the whole county. And I think that's where we lose sight sometimes, and so that's all I have.
Yeah, so I will just say that I am not accusing anybody of anything. I'm saying what I said when I ran for office and what I intend to do as I go forward. And I will always, you know, be on the side, the side of transparency. The other question is why I voted for it, and I voted for it to go forward because it's gotta go forward. We cannot have nothing, and once my motion failed, something needed to happen to get it to a vote. And I voted to put it on the ballot. That's what I voted for. So if my motion fails, we've gotta get it on the ballot somehow, and I voted to get it on the ballot. And I thought very hard about not voting for it. But, but I did vote for it because it needed to get on the ballot. We need to get the process going. And I've said from the very beginning that I don't believe that the public will go for the whole thing, you know, with no provision for the courthouse. I still believe that's true, and I'm not gonna pretend that I think it's great. You know, that's a little bit too much to ask, I think, of a fellow commissioner, so I will, I will leave it at that.
Any other visitors? Hearing none. Rod, micro-surfacing bid award. Morgan? Okay.
I, um, I checked through the numbers and everything matched up with what their bid total was, so Aztec ended up winning that one. So if you can sign that, and then if Carrie could scan that in and send that to me, I'll get it going, get their stuff from them that we need.
So we'll take a motion to accept Aztec's bid for micro-surfacing.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Do you have the paperwork, Rod, or?
No, I don't. Did you? Did you send that?
Yeah, I sent the notice of award to Carrie and Rod last week, but I can resend it if we need to.
If Carrie has it, or do you need her?
Let me look, because I don't remember getting that, but maybe I did, and maybe I overlooked it.
I don't remember seeing it either. I must be...
I know I had an issue once. Okay, okay. It looks like I didn't. Sometimes Rod doesn't get my emails, so.
I've got it.
Okay, so I'll just sign it after the meeting.
Is that by choice?
For some reason, we have trouble with our computers communicating.
Okay, signs for Clay County Sportsman's Group. I did talk to Lexi, and I hate to have her come again, but I think we need to gather some more information before we make this decision.
Whatever makes you happy.
She's, she's been very busy.
And she talked to me upstairs.
Yep, so I think we, I think we should put this on for next week, try and gather a little more information.
Want to table it again?
Yeah. If, if that, if you guys are okay with that.
No, I'm fine. I'd like to have it looked at. I'll move to table the sign next time.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
The SS SCC, or CCSG club, and if we, if we go to talk about this again, I'd suggest that we put it the Clay County Park Shooting Sports and leave the club out of it. None of the clubs are what funds it, but the whole thing of it is, is actually Clay County Park Shooting Sports.
Okay, Clay County.
Now, that didn't come from either one of the chairman, because both of them wanted, wanted the way that is. Well, actually, the one didn't want to sign it all, and the other one wanted it.
Clay County.
Shooting.
Say that again. Clay County Shooting.
Sports. Or any other verbage anybody can come up with that sounds something other than...
So, yeah.
Because nobody's gonna really make a heck of a lot of sense out of CCSG.
Yeah.
Well, that's what the guy that got hold of me.
Yeah, I know, that's...
So we'll leave out the club and Clay County Shooting Sports.
That's the way I see it.
Arrow and arrow.
Yeah, when they get down there, they'll say they have to have a club membership, and then they, well, they gotta pay dues, but it's otherwise, it's open to the public.
And the color is fine.
Yeah, that matches the signs that are out there, in my opinion, and as far as legality goes, I talked to Lexi about it yesterday, too, and I can't understand where there's a problem, but whatever. I've got, it was so great.
Okay.
Yeah, it's sort of alphabet soup the way it's spelled out there, but if you tell, I guess if someone has been referred to it by a member of the club, that they would tell them it was that alphabet soup to look for.
And then another thing is that the CCSG or whatever it is, the CC is really just repeating, because it says on the top of the sign, it already says Clay County Park, and then these things, rodeo grounds and so on. So if it said Shooting Sports and an arrow going down there.
So you don't, you think it shouldn't even have Clay County on it, just put Shooting Sports?
Yeah.
Yeah, or something?
Just Shooting Sports.
Just Shooting Sports?
To me, that's simple, but whatever.
Yeah. That way the sign doesn't get this long.
Right, yeah.
Right, and I'm sure the fewer the letters, the less cost there's gonna be, which is only a hundred fifty bucks to begin with.
Well, this one's fifty-two inches right now, to be legal.
Yeah.
It's gotta be the same as, like, our street signs.
Is the font size the same as the ones above it, then?
What?
The lettering size is the same as the, where it says Clay County Park and campground?
I guess I don't know. I haven't, I haven't checked that out.
Yeah, it should match, though, is what, the way I see it.
But so if we just Shooting Sports, I guess I need to know, so I...
Yeah.
Because I have to approve, and I didn't approve this till the meeting, which is a good thing, because they ain't been made yet.
Yeah, just, just wait on it.
If it was me, Rod, I'd let everybody stew on it for a week, so they come up better wording. Because I might, too.
Okay, that's fine. We'll move on to, move on to Terry Jensen ditch cleaning request.
Yeah, Terry was in here probably three years ago, and we've given permission to clean right in front of his place. It's about a quarter of a mile, and the guy he hired made it around the corner and never came back. So he asked me, he now has his own little mini excavator, and I don't know if you all know where Terry lives, but it's a mile and a half east of, half a mile west of the Greenfield Road. It's quicker, easier, and right in front of his house is culverts. You can see about a half an inch. I mean, it's silted in, and it definitely needs it, and he, he knows he's gonna seed it, and he's even gonna flag where the old tile is. He's already dug around the tile to find out, so he'll put signs up, so if we come along and do something. And I told him, ask to seed it when it's done, and he's good with that, and told me he'd let me know when he starts and I can come up and check it. I never had a problem with him before, so I recommend that we let him do it. It's at his cost total.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Kind of bringing up the tile. Do we, do the tiles ever give you any issues where they surface into the ditch?
Yes. I've been gonna bring that up.
I wonder, would it help to require marking the end of tiles?
I require them. If they call and ask me, and I try to get them to get it as close as they can to a culvert that goes under the road or a crick, and try to leave it in their, in their, on their property, but if it has to come out, I make them put a post up with an orange top, something so we know it's there if we ever come along, and we have a lot of snow, it ain't gonna matter. We'll end up messing up the end of the pipe, but mowing, anything like that, you know, I make them keep it in the back slope.
That's, that's what I had.
And I guess that's just me. I don't know if we have an ordinance.
Yeah, I was gonna, I don't remember seeing an ordinance on that.
Since we...
So far, so far, you're getting along without specific authority to do that.
There is an ordinance that if they're gonna dump into a county road ditch, they have to get permission.
Right, and they, but...
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, or mark it, to mark that end.
Well, and Rod always makes them mark it.
Mark it, China, was, I don't know, it was my idea, but I've been telling them that since we quit, since they quit coming in to ask permission to dig and drain.
Yeah.
And there's like five, six guys that are doing it, and so far, I haven't had any issues, but, I mean, when that time comes.
I know the tile guys have gotten to the point, they, they tell you to mark them.
Oh, it's easier.
Yeah, because they said otherwise they can't, you know.
Yeah, and then some of them put the critter guard on them, you know, and if that gets too far out, I make it, they have to put on the volin' oil, there's one that's about three foot tall, orange, and there was an existing tile there already, and I made them put that up. That way, somebody goes in the ditch, it's crash, or, you know, it doesn't hurt the car, won't injure anybody, you know, whatever.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Structure fourteen dash one fifty dash zero zero six condemnation. Which one is this?
Land Deans Bridge, to be specific. I didn't think I'd ever put that down, but I'm tired of it. Up to you guys, I think. Alexis wants more time, because she hasn't had time, so she wants it moved to next week, which I have no problem with, but I'm just saying. I have put up with this for at least three years, and the state is on me. Either they're gonna take our funding away, and then we're gonna have to pay the hundred thousand dollars that has been spent on engineering, and we're still gonna have no wooden bridge there, which I don't care if that wooden bridge falls in, but that ain't the point. We already, we've been going through this. They knew about it for six years, and three years, I can't get anybody to talk to me. I run into one of the boys, and he almost hid from me like the plague, and I'm tired of it. I, if they don't care, I don't understand why we don't care. We are talking about such a minute little piece of ground, and I should've brought the plant, so I could be specific. I will next week. But we're talking about a tenth, tenths of an acre. At the end of this pipe, where the culverts are gonna be, box culvert, excuse me, where the rock is gonna be, and then there's a temporary easement, so in case they have to turn the loader around to get the rocks in there, after that, they ain't gonna lose any ground, but she will not get back to me, neither one of the boys will get back to me. Have you had any luck?
I talked to Joe, and he was gonna talk to John, but they want us to go, you know, go back and level that hill off to the south, I think it is, isn't it?
No, the hill's to the north.
To the north, but...
That's a township road. That's out of our jurisdiction even.
But the cost is, and it doesn't need to be done.
Who's, who's, who are you trying to get ahold of?
Shelley.
Shelley Landine.
Shelley, John, or?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Joe.
Joe.
Gerald passed away, probably a year ago now.
And he was totally against it, almost run me over up there one day, told me to get out of there, and...
Is there anybody else that lives on that road? There is.
No.
No, there isn't.
Oh, yeah, right across. Right across the road, there is, and he already signed up on it. He's a cousin. He's a Landine, too, but I can't remember.
So they're the ones, they're the only ones that actually use the road?
No, no, that's...
No, it's, it's traveled.
It's traveled.
And that's the big problem. The issue is the speed. Right now, it's posted fifty-five, but they slow down because there's a wooden bridge, but when the new box culvert gets put in, it has to be posted, and I don't wanna speak out there, but at least thirty-five, if not twenty-five.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was at thirty-five.
The state makes us put up a sign, which will go into that ordinance or whatever we just did because of that hill.
Yeah, the hill is, it's a pretty steep hill that's right immediately beside the bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, not only that, when we had it closed, we had legal issues. That was brought up with Gerald. The sheriff put up a camera out there and caught them moving the barricades. So that turned into a big fight, because we had the bridge closed, and every time we'd drive up there, the things would be moved, and, I mean, they just have been uncooperative for the last ten years, so I'm...
And they, they have to get across the bridge to the south, too. I've, I've told Joe, I was like, if we don't do it, and we close the bridge, you're never gonna get one again.
Yeah, that's a...
So I don't know what we, what we have to do, our legal course. I know nobody likes this condemnation, but I don't know why we need it, but we're using federal and state money, and they're making me jump through the hoops.
Get on it.
Last two weeks ago at the meeting in Deadwood, I had a big powwow with all the uppityups, and there's no give on their end. They just can't believe that nobody wants a new structure.
I thought, I thought there was a permanent easement, too, but there's just a construction easement now.
There's just a very little permanent easement right at the end of the culvert.
The one-tenth of an acre is the permanent one.
Okay.
So anyway, and now Alexis is very busy today, and she told me, and I have no problem. I've waited, been dealing with for three and a half years at least, so.
Yeah, Leo's behind you giggling there. He's...
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time sitting here being quiet.
Yeah, Bill's just happy he's not up here anymore.
Well, yes, this is...
So, we can start, if we, if, we'll figure this out next week, but we can start a combination, condemnation.
Imminent domain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing.
I don't know, but legal.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand. Sounds to me like that's gonna probably be our only choice.
I'm gonna call Joe when we get out of here, but if we can't get anywhere, I'm just gonna tell him, we can either do this civilly, or this is the route we're gonna have to go, because...
Or we'll close it and take it out.
Yeah.
One of the, you know, if that, uh, yeah, I don't know what else. It's posted right now, put it that way. I'm not gonna say how much, because I don't, I can't remember.
But definitely not for a semi.
No, you cannot drive a semi over it. I'm not sure, empty?
Really, three options.
Three options?
Right, there's three options. You close it, you do, you, you do the repairs or the replacement the easy way, or you do it the hard way.
Right.
Well, and closing it right now, because I, I don't think the bridge is, I mean, the bridge can still be trapped.
Yeah.
But they're wanting to take semis across it, too, which they legally can't. I, I mean, it's gonna be an inconvenience for a year or for the rest of their life. It depends on how they wanna...
All their arguments are township arguments.
It's only about three or forty miles from where the sprayer went through a year or two ago.
Yeah.
This is just half a mile south forty-six.
Four miles out or so, yeah.
This is like half a mile south forty-six. That was South Hook City.
Yeah, yeah, I know right where this is, but I thought the sprayer was just east of city.
Just a mile north of Tabernacle.
Yeah.
They were Tabernacle Church. Anyway, that's my position. I wish it was somebody else's position. Maybe we could get Turner County to come in, maybe they wanna move to Turner County?
Okay, we need to defer to next week, then?
Table this one, too.
Table it. Need to motion to table?
Yeah.
So done.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Legal action for ditching without permission on three oh four. Or three oh two, sorry, three oh two.
That was another question I had for Alexis. I don't know.
Where we can go with that?
I looked after talking with Dick yesterday about the next subject. I kinda looked in there, something in the state. I mean, there's a couple state statutes that say they can't be changing the grade in the ditch and all that stuff, whether, you know, it's a class two misdemeanor. What are we gonna do? We're gonna push the dirt back in, and it's already loose. The trench is already dug, and they fill a pack full of dirt first rain we get, you know, where the water's gonna go.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Are we gonna get that first rain?
Uh, maybe not. There's water standing in it when I took the picture, because the tile is running. But if you notice the beacon photo, so there is quite a ditch coming in on the right-hand side of the photo, and that's where most of the water was running out the field, you know, comes out into the field, so now...
Twenty-eight.
So now they're trying to divert it all over to the west, and I'm pretty sure they're planning on farming that little corner there now. But as you can see on the other pictures, it's pretty radical. It's quite a drop-off. And these were all graded two thousand nine to a six to one, because we use state money or federal money. Some of it, fix it, but most of it, we built to the state standards.
No, they did, they did it themselves.
No, they gotta, they got one. But, so, that's something I wanted to talk to Lexi about. Two is if there's...
Any legal...
And I, my fault. I mean, I drive that road quite often from Wakanda. I take that road to Falls all the time. And, yeah, they got me. I don't know when they did it, but Sunday afternoon. When they did it, but Sunday afternoon. But it's pretty, you know, and so everybody drives by and sees that. And they never asked me for permission. So. I just know if we have any legal recourse for that.
Well, that's not only your fault, Rod. I saw him doing it. I just assumed they had permission. So.
It's, uh.
And I don't let anybody tween a county ditch. That was something else I was gonna ask. Instead of like. Jerry Jensen, that is obvious. But I told him, he was ready to dig it out last week. I told him, man, wait till Tuesday. Okay, do what you gotta do. But is that something you guys want me to bring in? Every time, or do you want me to make the decision?
I think.
On the road?
I think it's easier for you. For us to make that decision. So they're not sitting there going, Rod's playing favorites. And you can just. Have a, I don't know, a way out or whatever. It's not a, you know, just tell them it's not up to you. That, that's my thought. What do you?
Yeah.
It's a real.
I, I totally agree. I think that's, cause.
Cause I did, I did one on my own north of Wakanda. Well, just because it was a small, little area. But yeah, I mean, that's, when it gets like, uh, the last one there, when it gets. Over a hundred feet, then it's, makes me nervous then.
Maybe even if you hit one of those small little ones like that. You just let us know.
Yeah, I just.
Can, can we do it by consensus through email? Is that legal? And then make it formal at the next meeting? Cause there's times where we get a three week gap. And it might be the only time they have to, to do it.
I know.
But I don't know if we can legally, can we do that? Is that?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I'm looking at Sam.
She's hiding.
Sam's taking notes so that she can look at it later.
Sam says.
Which is, which is fine. Which is fine. You take notes and.
Yeah, that's best.
We don't have anything right now to.
You don't really wanna come off the top of your head very well.
No.
That's not a good idea.
It really is a mess though, you know, the wells piles, uh, are just piled willy nilly.
Yeah, at least they're all under ground, but.
Right, but.
But now it's gonna cut there. I've seen.
Yeah.
Make amounts of water come across there.
Bad idea.
So we'll wait and see.
Kinda sloppy work too.
Alexis has to say about that too.
Did they cut into your slope on the, on the road slope? That's what it looked like, but I couldn't tell.
No.
The back slope.
The back slope?
Back, yeah.
Yeah.
They're outside the. Ten foot safe zone. I had the sheriff up there making a report on it. But. I'm complaining about it, but. Pretty sure there's nothing we can do about this one. It's the next one. When they get right next to the road, did they dig it about eight feet straight down?
I'm not so positive that we can't do something about this one.
Right, because they were supposed to get, they needed permission. There's gotta be something. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, and I. We put a lot of notices in the paper about.
I'll mention it to Dan.
Can't do that. And I was. Pretty sure I've never had. Nothing in there. Well. Used to be a notice put out every year that any ditching out in the field, they had to call me. I had to go look at it before they cleaned it out. And after that, but since the drainage. More dissolved, why? There's no notice like that put in the paper, but. There's more people read the legals than I thought.
You know, it, it, it might be helpful, um, for Rod and, um, Alexis to work together to come up with. A procedure that, you know, will meet legal standards and cover Rod's. Back. That, um, you know, Rod can use going forward. And then if the commission approved that procedure. Um, you know, then it could just kind of run, run independently and come back to the commission when, when Lexi deems it necessary. But I think having kind of a standard operating procedure, since this seems to happen. Um, periodically would be, uh, would save us all a lot of, a lot of time and trouble. But I think it would have to be Alexis and, and Rod that would propose it.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would also like to add more. More, we're gonna come up with some. I have a permit, but they gotta ask me for it.
Okay.
Uh, maybe you weren't here, but at Torrance and Southern Homes, they got. They stayed out in each field, but they still went under our road.
Yeah.
They bore it under the road and it's already done. And I don't know if they encased it. They encased under the eighth and Clay and the railroad and Highway fifty, because the guy welded the steel pipe. Out the field, but just like that. And I. Wanna, I talked to him yesterday and then on the way, I was kinda late. I went west. I was gonna go east and this morning when they come. To the meeting is already done.
Well, they just.
Yeah.
They had to do it yesterday.
Well, you might wanna mention it to them.
That would have, but they weren't there when I got by.
You know what company it is?
Well, I got an idea, but they'll be there when I.
Yeah, they were hired by Clay Royal Water and.
And they know.
Yeah, I, you know, remember, we had a flurry of Clay Royal Water crossing permits about a month ago, a little over a month ago. And, uh.
I'm pretty sure.
I remember, you know, I could not remember that there was a crossing permit for down there. I didn't, I called Rod when they were up. I saw that they were gonna be crossing under the railroad. Track and under the, the, the little bypass that goes to, up to join the. Uh, Highway fifty. And I just checked with him for sure that that bypass was not our, we didn't have responsibility there. And we don't, but I saw they're going straight south through the field. And once they get to Timber Road, I know we have authority and I don't remember there being a permit there. So I called him to check on that. That's how I got involved in that part.
But Clay Royal Water knows that they need to encase.
Yeah, well, they know because, well, they just did six, six permits, you know?
Well, that and they, this whole thing got, well, I know we really emphasized it when they did Wakanda.
Yeah.
A year ago or so. Cause they were just gonna, those people were just gonna bore under it and didn't know they needed to case it.
Yeah. Right. And, you know, on this procedures thing. On the procedures thing too, really, we already have a procedure for, uh, rogue, uh. Ditch work like this. You know, we already have a.
It's.
Ordinance, you know, ordinance that, that that's illegal to mess with it out in the ditch and, uh. From time to time, Rod finds one. And, uh, he. He follows the procedure he ought to. He comes to the board and lurches to us, brings pictures, shows us what the deal is. Sometimes we might have to drive out, have a personal look and, and, uh. We've had, uh, actually had folks that did this come in and we dress them down right in the meeting.
Mm-hmm. Cause what is it? Ignorance is no excuse for, what is that saying on, on the law? Yes.
Yeah. It is easier sometimes to get forgiveness than permission. However, it's not safer.
No.
Usually not.
But on three oh two, I think. I think that one, we're gonna have to, I mean, it's, it's gonna be better if we tell them, you need to come up with a. With a plan to fix this.
Sure.
And see what they come up with.
If that was drainage ditch wasn't meant to be there. Across, we wouldn't have put a culvert under the road. When we built the new road, we had to put two culverts in there because. There's two drainage ditches. Now they want to.
Make one.
Divert it all over using the county road ditch. When it goes into one. In their field.
Right.
So they want it in the ditch instead of the field. And they are in our, the sign.
Yep.
May, maybe it's on one of you guys' pictures.
Yeah.
Mine is.
Oh, yeah.
On there, but the sign is on the other side of where it's built.
Yeah.
And I don't know. I, I, I heard the name. They got a lot of ground along there, but.
Yeah, the sign's just visible on one edge of the photo.
Yeah.
I tried to get it.
Yeah. Well, it ought not to have happened. That's just it.
Okay.
There's another one we'll waste for Alexis. You can be busy.
Yeah.
Or Sam.
She's gonna have. Both.
She's gonna have a busy meeting.
The regulations for artesian wells draining into road ditches? That must be that one too, who you're talking about?
Uh, no, I found out there's pretty much nothing.
Yeah.
He said there's, he gave me some statutes and we talked on the phone and there's just nothing there was. Getting teeth in it.
Oh, as far as being able to do something.
Yeah, it actually, the State Water Rights Commission has a rule. Uh, under ASRD seventy-four. That if there's an artesian flow, uh, landowner. Must restrict it to a minimum flow or five gallons a minute, whatever will keep, keep it from freezing up over winter. But, uh, they. I don't, I, I know the couple of places where they have. Uh, came, come out and looked at it and dressed them down, but, uh. They really don't have much authority when it comes down to that. They don't have a, a means of, of finding them or, or giving them a. A misdemeanor for that particular offense.
Is it? Is that, cause we're talking the one on three oh two.
We're talking same ground. I didn't realize it. But it's, you have five hundred feet or less. West of this ditch. Always on north side of the road.
Is that the one where, in the grass area?
Yeah, and it runs, they ditched it out to drain into the ditch. And we. When they, when we did the road. It was backfilled in there and it run, there was a little creek right inside. Goes to the east to the. West of those two pipe, we just looked. Now they got a trench, not with a, somebody just dug it by hand. So it runs in the ditch and it's kinda low there. And I went to walk out to look at it and, but it took one more step. I didn't. There's a lot of water sitting in the ditch. It's hard on the road, but it's not a lot of water. And we talked about this once. Oh, a long time ago.
I'm sure when you redid the road.
And I, you know. Seemed to me like what he told me is five gallons a minute. And I think it was running harder then than it is now. So I'm wondering if they didn't tap it and it's, but it, you know, it's still draining. Into the road ditch. It was running. Down. There, the only other thing. You know, it'd be nice if they could run a small tile from there down to the thing to get it out of the road ditch, but so far.
We're cap it.
Yeah.
Cause now this one's on Hadeen's too, because there is one on to the west of that one.
Right, I think there's one in the old yard. Pasture where all those cattails are.
Yep.
But I can't.
But that one actually has a pump jack on it.
Well, does, because the cattails and break my ears or so tall in there.
Right.
That I can, but I just assume because the ditch had wet from that one off.
So if they're not using the wells, aren't they considered abandoned then?
Uh. Yes, there's a nineteen fifty-five law that says that, that, uh. If you're not using a, a well like that, you, you're, and it's flowing, you shouldn't cap it. And in fact, there was, uh, money. Uh, that was called for in that same statute from the state to, is a matching, matching to help, uh, the landowner plug those. There's never been a penny of money in that, that fund since nineteen fifty-five. Uh, so. Uh. No, there's, uh.
So there's no teeth in that?
So there's no teeth in that either, really. There are, uh, for instance, to give you an idea how serious it can be. Out, uh, just east of Chamberlain on I ninety, uh, Rod's seeing the well and. Thinking of, there's one on the south road ditch. Uh, in I ninety, in the wintertime, it makes a nice, uh, ice Christmas tree. It's about a hundred feet off the road.
The one you pointed out.
I ninety, yes, yes. I pointed it out to you on a trip, the trip to here. Well, that, uh, that actually. Uh, when it was drilled back a hundred and fifteen, twenty years ago, it actually doubled the size of Red Lake. There are actual farmsteads that were in and dated. So, and that's during the times. Yeah, that's during the time when they were worried about flowing wells more. But, uh, still there really isn't anything with teeth in it that I know of, that, uh.
What's it roughly cost to plug one?
Uh.
Or does that vary too widely?
Uh, it varies a lot, but, uh. Generally, most of them will be fifteen hundred bucks or, or less. I've done a lot of them. I've plugged a lot of them where they are a nuisance. On this one, I think I told Rod yesterday, if it is something, it's damaging our road, you know? Uh, where you're causing. Uh, damage to a neighbor's property by something that you own on your property, you know, that there's. Uh, damage, damages that you could, uh, perhaps get recourse in court.
I'm pretty sure there's not enough. There, uh, would stand up. You know, just, we have the cattails in the ditch.
We'd be. My personal thought is we'd be better off to split the cost with them.
Yeah.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the, the other part is the plug and flowing wells like that, there's no guarantee.
No, the, the best way to plug them is to try and save them.
Yeah.
I've seen that many.
I've done a number of them.
Recap or re-line and it kills them.
Yeah.
Really, yeah.
You, it actually run a, just use, uh, if you can get a, a grout tube down it, a polyethylene grout tube and. Get it, uh, as deep as you can and then pump grout through it. And, uh. Uh. That, that's the best way to plug them. And, uh, uh, I've done a number of them that have been successful. I've had a few that failed. I've had a few that made it worse. Where it would surface thirty feet away. I've had one, I had one where it surfaced thirty, thirty or forty feet away in the guy's yard.
Oh.
But. Uh. Yeah, it can be done and they can be made so that it makes the well usable again. Using that same method. Just shut the grout out of the inside of the pipe, put a valve on the top.
But these two would be, there's no, there's no use of them.
No need. If there's no need for the well, you wouldn't do that.
No.
We had one north of Metlin too, south of the. Clay Creek on the west side of the road, same way. But that actually drains to the creek sooner or later. But again, it causes cattails. We have to go and mow it down every year trying for snow. You know?
Was this on horse, that one?
No, just right south of the creek on the west side of the road.
Oh, okay.
That is, but you go down a couple hundred. Feet on, right there on the outside of the ditch. And there's a number of them in the laterals. But, um. Yeah, I. Well, I was up taking pictures with Liz that I noticed that well. I thought, well, I'm gonna find out. And I couldn't find anything on DNRs. I called him to see if. Where to go and then he sent me to the thing and now it's pretty much.
And there's supporting statute for that too. I, I, I gave, I gave him the supporting statute.
Yeah, the statutes are, well, there's a. SDR. Chapter seventy-four, the codified law forty-six dash six fifteen. Which doesn't tell you a whole lot.
Yeah.
But the administrative rule. One pretty much. Says there ain't much you can do about it.
But the bottom line is they're not really causing any structural issues with our road. At all, are they?
It's more of a nuisance.
Yeah.
And, you know.
It gets softer because, you know, in those wet years, it was already soaked.
Yeah.
And wet. So just, it compounds the problem.
The other thing that does, it's often when there's a warm water in a road ditch like that, it keeps that ground thawed. At that location where it's frozen up under other parts of the roadway. And so you can end up with a soft spot. Uh, because of that.
Yeah.
And we don't have anything like that. There is.
We've been lucky enough for us to use your engine. Right, you know, now.
Yeah.
And this was a, it was worse before.
Oh.
We reconstructed drone because I think that was like oh nine, two thousand and ten, and I think something was done with that well at that time maybe, because it seemed like it got less flow after that, but.
Well, we've beat that horse pretty hard.
So let's move to bridge removal resolution, not to include structure fourteen dash one thirty dash one seventy-six.
Yeah, I apologize for not having a map with me. But, so you have four of them there. So the one that does not, or the one that has the structure number one thirty, one seventy-six has already been done. So the other three are the ones that need to be signed.
So they already, they already did those at the last meeting and then I sent them to Brad.
Oh, so then we just eliminate, for the record, this is the one that did.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, this one that's east of the Manning Feed Lot.
And south.
Yeah.
This is straight south.
One south, okay.
So technically, all we did was approve it twice.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So do we need to undo it?
I don't think so. I mean, I guess there's no harm in approving something twice here.
I just want to make you aware that was the one that was already, has already been approved for removal.
Well, if we, if we do this, if we ask to have it removed from that, a resolution just acknowledging that that doesn't include that structure, that lets them know that we noticed and we're not, we're not asking them to pay for it twice.
Yeah, well, they, they'll, they'll, I'm sure Brad and Morgan only sent in three of them. Morgan, are you, uh, you only sent in three this time, correct?
Yep, yep. He just sent in the three. He didn't include that, that fourth one that's already been done. And he's already got those submitted and everything, so.
Okay, we're in the clear then.
So if we wanted anything for our minutes, we could just say that we've already approved that one, that one, instead of, instead of removing it, so somebody doesn't get confused going, you couldn't take it out? It says right here that you took it off of there.
We're acknowledging that that is one that we're not uh including in that request.
But that, that has already been
Yeah.
approved to be removed.
And that was my mistake last week.
Okay, uh, local transportation study update.
Okay, so we've been approved for that local transportation study that we applied for a month ago or whenever. Um, the road studies, the bike paths, the asphalt, pretty much everything. Um, we're awarded that. Uh, so now it'll take them a couple of months, they said, to get the paperwork all put together. So right now, they attempted to approve us for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the study at thirty thousand of the cost to us. That's the starting point. It might be, it won't be more, it could be less. So in a couple of months, they'll send me the paperwork or carry. And then we have to sign an agreement with the state like we do on quite a few things to proceed from there. So just so I let you know that they did approve our application.
And at that, at that time, we'll have the price, what our share would be.
Yeah, yeah. At that time, I believe, yes, I'm not positive, but I know it won't be any more than thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Which we kind of knew upfront. That's what we put on application also. That was the max I wanted to do.
Okay.
Great.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh Gordon Anderson, clean two hundred and fifty feet of ditch on the east side of Greenfield, north of two ninety-nine.
And that's not correct. It should be west side of the ditch. I put it in there wrong. But yes, it definitely needs to be cleaned to get the water to run back down. It's cut a trench out in the field where it used to be. The ditch is all silted in and he's gonna clean it out back to the creek where it belongs. And I, he's gonna, he'll reseed it and another one of those things. He was sitting there ready to go last Thursday and I told him I had to wait till today. So I, I recommend that we approve it.
So you've, you've told him how deep he can go and, okay.
Still moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Your mic's off, Betty.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else?
That's all for me.
Anybody have anything for Rod?
Except for apparently I have to come to the ditch board meeting.
That's right. It's required.
We don't even get chicken this year.
No chicken this year.
Will that ditch board meeting be available on Zoom?
I don't think so. They don't have the technology at the four H center.
It's in the big room at the four H center, so it'd be pretty tough.
So I assume Betty, you're not gonna be able to make it, correct?
Right. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm out here with my mom who's had a few bad falls.
Yep. Uh Phyllis, are you gonna be able to make it or not?
I was planning not to make it this year.
Okay, are Dick and Mike, are you, okay, so we're covered then. Gangton two.
So we probably need to go ahead of time and set up, don't we? I don't, I don't know what the four H center looks like right now, but.
Well, they got, they'll probably have it set up for four H kids.
Yeah.
Targets.
No, they, they take the targets down every, every Sunday.
Oh, well, we had to take them down when we had our M shop meeting up there.
Really?
But it took about ten minutes to set up. Chairs and tables are right there. It'll be pretty easy.
Okay.
I'll be there earlier.
I, I do have one question, but joint powers amendment for the landfill, is that anything I need to?
I don't think so.
Stick it on for.
There's nothing. That's, Phyllis, that's, you can explain that. That's just between the two counties, correct, and cities?
Two counties, two cities, just need to agree to it, correct?
Yep.
I mean, nothing has changed, correct?
I doubt it.
Still gonna be. That's the only thing I was worried about as long as they just stay all on the block through.
Yeah, that, this doesn't have anything to do with the roads.
Okay, okay.
This is just operations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, one.
I know.
Is that, I thought it was three.
We'll wait for you.
Twelve thirty, actually.
Bring a new notebook.
Yeah.
Hi, did everybody get my report? Is this on?
Uh, the button's gotta be up. There you go.
Okay, did everybody get my report? Carrie, you didn't send it out?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, does anybody have any questions? Because I could read it to you, but I think you can all read.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious which na- which Vermillion neighborhoods had increased values?
Uh, the land on um one of the neighborhoods in Bliss Point and then on Mickelson Street.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So the median ratio actually went down.
Yeah, unfortunately, because the houses are selling for more than we, what we can keep them assessed at. Because it is a buyer's market right now. Everybody's buying. And I know there's been a couple of houses that there's been a bidding war on, so they, they've sold for more than what they were asking for.
Really?
Wow.
Yeah, that's happening across the country.
Two houses back, we had that. We're fortunate to have that when we're selling.
Yeah, if you're the seller, that's a good thing.
Yeah, as long as you don't need to go buy somewhere else, though.
Yeah.
Well, that was a restoration where we restored the house to pretty nice shape, so.
Agland actually went down.
Yep.
I just saw an article in the, was that in the P and D that uh Agland went up in northeast Nebraska, right across the river?
Everything has.
Yeah, I mean, quite a bit.
It's been up here quite a bit.
Yeah.
See, and South Dakota uses a productivity system where they do the top, they do the eight-year Olympic average and throw out the top and the bottom. So we had some very bad, I shouldn't say bad, but lower yields for a few years back.
The prices from two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen were high.
Yes.
And we lost those.
Yeah, so.
That's why I did it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then, you know, last spring that you had suggested that we don't go into any more houses, what are your thoughts when we're thinking about what we're gonna do this summer for work projects? By the end of the, the month, we will all be fully vaccinated in our office.
I think if you're okay with going in and they're okay with allowing you in,
Okay.
I, I can't imagine somebody's gonna have a problem if they're trying to dispute something that you're assuming is in there. So, I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to start going back to.
But, but you're thinking your regular rotation too, where you go, go in every X number of years.
Yeah, yeah. So, which is way, we're way behind on that because of all the different things that have been going on. We did finish up going, sent out questionnaires to the rest of the city of Vermillion. We did finish that up. It's a big project. Even though it was, and then Bill and Laura went out and pictured everything and then getting everything into the computer, so. And now we're, we're hoping to get um ProVal, well, we're going to get ProVal and go to that. So that'll be done hopefully. Do a, we're gonna have to do a lot of modeling and stuff to get the neighborhoods and cost and stuff. But, and then there's a new soil survey out. I've only gone through like two townships in looking at it, but I don't think ours is going to have a whole lot of changes. Um, there's some, there was one, I noticed that the soil type totally changed in one section, but otherwise, most of them is just minor tweaks to the area that it had, so. But that's one of our plans to get that implemented.
Yeah, which township did you look at?
I looked, I've looked at um Glenwood and I'm just finishing up Riverside, looking at. So, because we don't wanna lose any difference in, in that, in value, if we can help it.
Anything else, honey?
No, um, and I, I guess, um, just that um all three of us will be going to conference at the end of May and Jean is gonna, has agreed to come in and and sit, but we'll probably do ten to noon and one to four, if that is agreeable.
Yeah.
And we've just about got our beacon fully operational out of ProVal. They're working on the last few lengths for that. I know, it's been a long time coming.
So you only have one appeal this year?
Um, one actual appeal. It's an Agland appeal. Otherwise, they've all been recommendations, so.
That's good.
Yeah, well, yeah. Um, so we should be out here next Tuesday by like two thirty. Three at the latest, I'm thinking. But today is the last day, so I can still be getting
Sure.
letters in today, so, and if they're mailed Thursday.
Yep.
So, but they have to be postmarked by today.
Okay.
So.
Now for next year, because they passed a new law on Agland that if it's not, what is it, ten percent of its assessed value, if they're not grossing that off of there, it loses its Agland status? Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I know they, I did that pass.
Yes, as far as I know.
The last I knew, they were still tweaking on it.
Okay.
But I don't know, um, but that's smaller, that's anything under twenty acres.
Oh, is that how that?
Yeah, it's the way I understand it. And, but, because the first thing, it has to be used for ag. It has to be farmed and they added some, some new, or they were talking about adding new, like horses never used to count and trees never counted as an agricultural pursuit. Um, and they were trying to add all that in. They had like three different versions and I'm not sure which one passed.
Because I was just wondering that, all that WRP ground that we have in the county now.
That does not change any of that, that kind, anything that's in a conservation easement, they have not changed the criteria for that.
Okay.
It's still assessed at what the soil types are. So if the soil type is, is a crop soil, it's still rated as a crop.
Okay.
And has a value.
So it's basically per the little acreages and stuff like that.
Right, right, yeah, pretty much anything, because then um I'm thinking about if they're within twenty miles of, say you have a two acre piece here and you're within twenty miles, that two acre piece can still be considered ag if it's being used, if you own other agricultural property.
No, nothing like confusing it.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the hardest things about deciding which way we should support it as, as from our office, because they all came out at different. The um one Kirk Shafie that did the um first one, he used to be the director out in Mead County. So a lot of this was directed for Mead County. Where I think their minimum acreage is a hundred and sixty acres.
Okay.
So. Yeah, the, the tree assessment thing, is uh that for like Christmas trees or that'd be like a wooded lot? Or say if you had ten acres that were all trees and you had it in conservation reserve, is that Agland or Treeland then?
I, I think they're talking timber.
Okay.
Not so much trees. Uh, tree is like a shelter belt.
Trees is a crop?
Because they're of timber.
Yeah.
See, and it's mainly out there because we don't have anybody here that's, does it for timber.
I'm thinking like Christmas tree farm or something like that.
I would think that would count as agricultural.
Yeah.
But I, I'll have to check into.
It should. It falls under the Department of Ag.
You think? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I know we do have one and I can't tell you how we, I think that that's less than twenty acres or so. I know we have one here, but I'm not sure how it's rated off the top of my head, so. Okay, any other questions for me?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Drew.
Yeah, uh, platform Patricia Bancroft, uh, down there by Burbank. Uh, the only reason it's come for the board is it's got a right-of-way dedication.
It's got what?
A right-of-way dedication.
Oh, yeah. I was a little surprised. I didn't see on his survey, you know, since it's such odd shaped, that he didn't have those other corners marked.
Which other, the, which other corner?
The interior ones, you know, there's a, um, a squiggle in the property line there and the, say on the one that they're working on, the south, the south boundary is not straight. It's got one, two, three bends in it. I was wondering why, it doesn't, probably doesn't matter to us, but uh, the way it's surveyed, how do you know what the actual dimensions of this thing is? See what I'm thinking of there, Drew? Notice there's pins in the upper, there's a found pin in, what is that? Found pin in the upper left side of the plot. There's a set pin in the upper right. And then there's a series of them along the right-of-way. But dividing Bancroft Track 1 from Bancroft Track 2, I, I, I just thought that you'd end up with survey points where there are irregularities in that south property line. Do you see what I'm?
You're talking on the north side of Bancroft 1.
Correct.
Where it
Yeah, right, yeah.
Now, is it, is it because it was plotted just for plating and not for resale? Or, or are we not looking at it right?
Well, this is just for the Track 2.
Yeah. But we don't, we don't know the, all the dimensions of Track, Track 2. If we don't know what the, what, what the property line is.
It's, everything is, everything that's, we're doing right now is just south of the road. Nothing north of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If you look at the location map, the very bottom right corner.
Yeah.
It's just that little shaded bit.
Okay.
That triangle.
If you flick over to the beacon sheet.
Okay.
It's just all that little triangle south of the road there.
Yeah, okay. And, well, what made me think about that is that, that the guy had found a pin, or found one pin in the northeast, northwest corner of that plot and then put a new one in, in the northwest, northeast corner and of the whole plot. And why would he do that if he did not find those other property corners?
There was something in that, I can't remember what it was. But there was something where he had a, there was a struggle in that northeast part of that curve.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what it was. For finding that right, I can't remember what that was, though. That was something we had, he had to go back on to get that worked out. Because originally, he didn't even want to do the right-of-way on this. He really resisted, but that's why we had to go back and he had to redo part of it. But as far as, yeah, yeah, I don't know that.
Okay, yeah, for this plot, I guess it doesn't matter at all, okay.
Wishes?
Move to approve the plot.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Ackard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Then Drew, you had welfare?
Yeah.
However you want to, I forget how we even put it on your help?
Yeah.
Legal help?
Legal help, all right, so for, for dealing with county welfare, specifically dealing with, are fun with one hospital and one attorney. I really need some help dealing with this and I think our, my office and state's attorney's office could maybe use some help. There is a contractor now, an independent consultant who's, used to be a county welfare officer for Cottington County. Who's now set herself up as a independent consultant. Who's advising for, first now just Hand County last month. And possibly might be interested, I got, I haven't even talked to her yet. But I would at least touch base with the board. Maybe explore the possibility of contracting with her, forget some consulting for us, because me dealing with that hospital and that attorney, I am way, way out of my depth on trying to deal with that. I'm dealing with one right now, it's been six, eight months dealing with it and hopefully we stay out of court on it. He laughs, I'm not.
Yeah, well.
She's laughing, she isn't, she sees that file.
Well, I know that we've had issues with this set of, of parties before. While I've been on the board, I think at least twice, maybe three times. So it, it does come up periodically. And this particular health provider and, and attorney is always the ones that are the issue. We never have, we haven't had troubles that I know of that have made it to the board on anyone else.
The other hospitals in the area don't use this process anymore. It's not worth their time or money to do it.
And they're easier to get along with.
Yeah.
The other, no, they, the other hospital has completely abandoned it. They don't even do this anymore.
Really?
Nope, don't even. They've abandoned it and the problem hospital has now reached an agreement with Minnehaha and Lincoln that has streamlined their process. And the thing that's gotten me terrified is this problem lawyer is going to have free time now.
Do you have any idea how much time you need from?
Not much, we max, I think, might have five or six cases a year to deal with. And I had none last year, with, due with COVID, well, one last year. So we're not talking a lot. But again, I, I, this has been kicking my butt up and down.
So at 25 bucks an hour should be, should we approve him for up to $2,000? That's 80 hours worth.
I'd go for that.
For the year and see what happens and then just put it in the budget for next year.
Yeah, at least, maybe not approval for that, just as a, at least open negotiation.
Okay.
Yeah, because then I can have the contract ready for maybe next.
Because we could, we could make a motion to, to authorize up to $2,000 in, in expenses for that consultant, if, if that will work for you. Can we do that, Carrie?
Yeah, he's on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd make such a motion. That gets it, that gets it back in your court and when you need more from us, come.
Well, I'll reach out to her today if I can get ahold of her and see what, because they're working on this, so.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Do you have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
Sorry, Ms. Hillis.
I'm just used to being the last one. Anything else, Drew?
No one, thank you much.
Let's see, Lane, you have drone policy, was it?
Yeah, and then I'll have a couple other items that don't need any decisions, just informational, but Carrie sent the drone policy out. Alexis and I have talked about it. This stems from a couple things, but basically there's an option, instead of taking the pilot's test every two years, we can do it through a certificate of authorization through the FAA. And that licensing lasts three years. And instead of $150 for a test, it's $50. So it's a considerable savings. My problem becomes, I think it's good for like Dennis and I, who have taken the test. But ultimately, it's a liability issue for the commission, the county. I think every new pilot should take the training and take the written pilot's test. Just to make sure that they do have knowledge of laws, regulations, airspace and all that. So really, the change would be from requiring that written test every two years to once you've passed that, being able to become a pilot through the other option, which is savings of money and also extended length of licensure. But again, I think it's your decision because ultimately it's liability on the county. And I have no idea how many pilots Dennis wants to try to run through, but I will maintain my maximum of four.
Yeah, that sounds good. So you want, wanted to change the policy to any new pilots, go through the written process and get the two-year license? And then after that, they can just do the renewal, that's good for three years?
Correct. With that, just so you know, I think they need to go through the training too. Frontier Precision, who did ours a few years back, they still do it and it's about $400 a person to go through the class. And to take the written test is $150 whether you pass or not. So if it takes you three times to do a written test, it's $450. I pay, I always paid for my pilots, the one they passed. So if I took them three times, it costs them $300 and we paid for the one that they passed. I think that's still reasonable, but I guess I don't think Dennis is there, but, you know, if he's got a problem, he can talk to you guys about that, so.
I think that's a good policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question was about where the drone will be stored? If it'll, you know, have a secure storage capacity?
Um, we already have a drone program. The drone is, is in my office, which is behind a locked door where only police officers can get into the lobby. And then it's behind another locked door in my office. Currently Dennis and I are the only ones who are licensed pilots. And he has the code to get into my office, but dispatch has to allow him into the hallway. So even then, he can't just come and get it.
Great, thanks. Guess my other question was about the Missouri River, because it looks like the National Park Service excludes, excludes you from it without permission. How, how does that work?
Do you want the legal answer or the reality answer?
Oh, I'll take the reality answer, thanks.
The reality answer is I asked for a waiver three or four years ago. And what I was told was that will take a considerable amount of time. The Park Service owns the river and up to the high water mark. Other than that, that is not their land. If you take off outside of their land and fly over, that is, what happens, happens. So officially, you're right, it's a National Park Service and we can't fly there. Unofficially, they gave me permission.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it just strikes me that that's a place where search and rescue would be kind of critical.
Yes. They mainly do that for places like Mount Rushmore and things like that. And it just happens to fall into that category.
Gotcha, thanks.
So Lane, do you want to? We don't have that wording, right, in, for the handbook?
We do.
No.
So do you want to get that together and we approve it next meeting?
Yeah, I can do that. I can change it in the policy book. And we can approve it, yeah, that'd be fine. So, I'll do that.
And then this is, this is a question for the commission members, because I'm new, does does the other department that has these have a similar policy, written policy?
Or what?
The, the only other department that has a drone is Highway. And I have no idea what they have for a written policy.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you that I've been told by several people, including Frontier Precision, that mine is more extensive than anybody else's around. And mainly because once I started, it seemed silly not to throw in there, don't drink and fly, but nobody else has that. So they, the Highway Department wants to adopt it, they can. My issue really becomes when it's a law enforcement thing. We have to, there are guidelines that we have to follow for evidentiary things. So that's why it ended up being really as extensive as it did on my part. The other thing is, is safety benefits does not insure drones. So I have an additional policy through Jensen's up in Beersford for liability. So it's $500 a year, I just got the thing, it's $511 this year. And mainly that's for if there's a failure and it falls out of the sky and whaps somebody in the head or something. So, and again, I don't know if the Highway Department has a separate policy or not for it.
Is that policy for you personally, Lane, or for the?
No, I, I list the pilots. So it'll, it'll be for the aircraft and the pilots. Which is why I require the pilots to be county employees for the liability purposes and because of the law enforcement thing, work comp, if something would happen to happen out of a scene and somebody gets hurt.
Yeah, I think we might want to ask the Highway Department for a similar policy. I mean, this, this one seemed really clear, sensible, thorough. And I would be concerned about both departments having, having written policies and procedures.
Any further discussion?
This one's, this one's labeled Small Unmanned Aircraft Program Policy and Procedure Manual for Clay County, South Dakota. I would think that it could and should apply to Highway Department.
I think we can, I think we can adopt it that way.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because as far as the, the flying and, or the drinking and flying, I mean, that's, that's in the handbook, that's no different than climbing in one of our vehicles, if you've been drinking.
Got the 12, 12-hour exclusion zone, just like an airline pilot. It's cool.
I, I think it does say at the end of the policy that it doesn't, it doesn't apply to highway. So we'd have to, we'd have to make an amendment that said that these rules will also apply to highway.
Right, I did that just because it's one of those things where, because of the evidentiary, evidentiary things, when you fly for me or I fly, there's guidelines that they don't really have to worry about out there, so. But yeah, I will rewrite that and change that and get it to you for a vote next week, then.
Can you run that past Dennis, too?
Yep.
In case he has any comments?
Yep, I will do that.
Since he's gonna have to follow this one also?
Yep. And he's listed as one of my pilots, so he is aware of that policy, he has a copy of that anyway.
Okay.
Just a couple informational things. Yankton County issue, commission issued a burn ban last night. So maybe start getting that on your radar, depending upon how much rain we get over the next couple, three days. The big issue is going to be timing. Because if we don't put one in place next week, you know, we gotta wait till the end of the month. And if we, and if it's no rain until the end of the month, you know what it's gonna look like out there.
But we do follow the red flag ordinance. I mean, we've already, that, that's a year-round one we do.
Correct.
So I mean, if it's, if it falls into a red flag, they can't burn anyway.
Correct.
Of a notification issue, Lane, where we put a notification in the newspaper?
Right, the commission can still put a burn ban on, which eliminates burning even on non-red flag days. Which is what Yankton County did last night. I have gotten one back, one email back from Cowahan Vermillion Fire. Things don't change, I think we will need to do that. So again, it's not necessarily anything that we have to do today or next week. But it's getting pretty, pretty dry out there, so something to think about.
Can we what, allow you to put one on if?
what, allow you to put one on if things change or don't change, as case may be between now and?
It's got to be a resolution through you guys. Otherwise, the red flag one takes care of it.
I, it sounds, Phyllis, tell me if I'm right, like you're proposing, um, a, uh, resolution that would, um, allow, um, Lane to declare a burn ban if um, dry conditions, uh, warrant it on any given day.
Correct, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't do that either.
Right, and some of that, which is why we, on the any given day, that's why we put the red flag ordinance in a few years ago. Um, the problem becomes if I'm, if I happen to be out of town, I can't do that, so the, when the commission puts in a burn ban, it's for until further notice, until you guys rescind it. Uh, so it's not a hit and miss thing, it's, it's a ban across for, I mean, when you're talking weeks, potentially.
Pray for rain.
Uh, we're supposed to be somewhere between an inch to two inches or through Thursday, so.
It was supposed to rain last night too.
Yeah.
It was, and, uh, first thunderstorm warning of the year that I've seen went out in Knox County last night, so it was just to, just to the south of us.
And, and there was a portion of Minnehaha County.
Oh, I didn't see that one.
Yeah. Lyon and, Lyon and, uh, Lyon County in Northwest Iowa and a couple others.
Uh, the only other thing I have is Travis, have you heard anything about the generator?
No, I guess I haven't, you took it up there though?
Yeah, it's been up there for three weeks or so, probably now.
I'll see where they're at.
Okay. Alright, and that's it, unless you got more for me?
I don't, anybody else?
No. Thanks, Lane.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, vouchers and payroll, everybody get to see those? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers and the payroll.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Joint Powers Amendment for landfill. Phyllis, do you know what the amendment is?
Yes, uh, basically whenever there is a new grant or state revolving loan, needed or awarded to the landfill, we need to make a new amendment to the joint powers agreement, the joint powers is Yankton County, Clay County, City of Yankton, City of Vermillion are basically the funding or ownership of the landfill recycling system. Um, currently there's a one million dollar, nine hundred thousand sixty-six dollar um, state revolving loan fund that has been awarded for the closure of cells two and three, I believe, and construction of cell six at the landfill. And with each of these new awards, there has been, um, this is the eighth amendment to the agreement that requires that we must remain partners until all debts are paid. Is basically what the amendment is. Any questions beyond that?
How long do they think the landfill, will they have enough room where they're at presently, do you have any idea, Phyllis? I just out of curiosity.
Up and up and up.
It's alright.
Me, five years ago, I would have had it right on the top of my head.
Yeah.
It's do I say I feel they should have bought land quite a while ago? And I won't go further than that.
Okay. That answered my question.
You got a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, there's a joint jurisdiction meeting Thursday. And then I don't think we have anything for executive session, does anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.
See you in a little while.
See you guys.
We won't see any of them.
No, I guess not.
Sorry.